Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:06. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, Council Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invocation, please?
Good evening, everyone. Father God, I thank you for your love and your kindness that you extend to us. I just praise you for your greatness and your righteousness. And Father, I thank you for all the provisions that you've extended to us and how you keep us and our families safe. And Father God, I just ask that you will continue to meet our needs. And I ask that you would bless us tonight with your wisdom, productivity, oneness, and peace, and clarity as we meet tonight. And I also ask, Father, that you would bless those who have been affected by the loss of jobs or instability or concern concerning their jobs. I ask that you provide them with resources and funds and assistance. In Jesus's name, I pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. I'm sorry, can't hear real quick. This one. Thanks. Alright, Madam Clerk, could you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilwoman Farid. Councilwoman Guillaume.
Present.
Councilwoman Hairston.
Here.
Councilwoman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here. Alright, we have a call. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Give us your mic, please.
Yes, I wanted to allow citizens to be able to make comments on the flyer that they received concerning the parking of the trucks and vans.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any opposition to adopting the amended agenda? Hearing none, by unanimous consent.
I have a point of clarity.
One second. Hearing none, by unanimous consent, the agenda is hereby adopted.
Point of clarity before the vote, sir.
You, I mean, one, you can ask a question now, but you couldn't do it in the middle of our voting. Because the voting was for the council members. It didn't include anyone else. But I welcome to hear your point of clarity.
I just have a point of clarity as to why the mayor and the administrative reports are not here for this public hearing. The February reports were turned in, but they're not here for the public, for the people.
Mr. President?
Yes, Madam, I'm sorry.
We don't normally have the reports at this, at the public hearing. This is only on legislation.
This is for legislation. Yeah, it's always, not once, did we have it. So, public hearing, for clarity, for your point of clarity. Public hearings are to hear citizens' comments on pending legislation, which is why we have legislation available for citizens to read at the work session as we work on it, to read on it the week before, a week after the work session, and between the work session and a public hearing, and then to come and speak, whether in favor of or opposition of that said legislation. That's the intent of the public hearing. Now, the reports will be on the agenda for the regular session where citizens can comment on anything, including the administrative reports.
So, thank you so much for the question.
Alright, so the amended, the amended agenda is hereby adopted. Council, for your, just pointed out, there were three things added to the agenda. I hope you guys have it online. It is online for the, um, for public consumption. So, citizens, as I just, I'm sorry, it's four.
I'm seeing four. Cindy, Kelly, Richard, Ricky, and Karen again.
I didn't see the four.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. There are four. And those four, that was added to the agenda, I think, yesterday, Sunday or yesterday, are appointees to the Board of Elections. So, as I just, um, um, explained to the mayor, public hearings are typically to hear citizens' comments on pending legislation. However, with this past agenda, Vice President Ferguson also added the ability for citizens to comment on the newly passed, past parking legislation. So, if you do want to speak on that, you can speak on that as well. So, with that, the floor is open. You just raise your hand. I'll call on you when you get to the podium. Please turn the mic on, state your name or ward you're from, and you have five minutes to speak on any of the agenda items, including the parking. So, with that, the floor is open to citizens' comments. I saw her hand first, and then yours. And if you're online, please raise your virtual hand, and then I'll call on you in order, which I see you.
It's right here. Okay. Thank you, Thomas. It's a whole lot of words, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say them all.
That's fine. Just state your name and what ward you're from, and then you can have your five minutes.
My name is Tree Rose. I am from Ward One, and my five minutes. I would like to call into question the egregious nature of this notice and the request, and request that future life-altering decisions affecting such a large population of the city have a notice sent out prior to final ruling similar to the one that was sent after the item was passed. I would like to note the predatory nature of sending out a notice of a new law ordinance with effective date of February 24th that is effective immediately and actionable with no grace period given. I would like to request a grace period of at least six months. According to the police chief, it is already being enforced. Prior to the notice being received, many of the residents, which I spoke to today, still have not received such a notice. This should be corrected immediately, and the decision reviewed until appropriate grace period can be determined. There is a lack of clarity in the notice as to what vehicles are covered due to the vague and all-encompassing nature of the ruling, holding, so I'm requesting hold enforcement until the law can be more clearly explained. A grant for the clause is lacking, which harshly impacts long-term residents of the city who did not purchase their homes with these foreseeable consequences, five years or longer is what I was requesting. I could not, however, excuse the councils laughing as they cheerfully skip off to go and affect all of our lives like this. I don't even know why y'all would do this. It's y'all just laughing with the police chief. I couldn't handle it. That's why I'm here. I've never come here. I let y'all handle y'all business by yourselves. It was especially disrespectful and shows a lack of concern for the wards in which you serve, especially when these, this was served to be an extreme hardship that it would seem may not affect the council members, code enforcers, or police chief personally. Request more decorum going forward. I have always been leery to rub shoulders with the council as I have heard many rumors of retaliation sustained by historical members of the community, some I know that are 100 years old now. Retaliation sustained by historical members of the community where enforcement is excessive and used in order to deter the residents from resisting new policies. Requests, I would request how the council and mayor aim to restore our faith in the fairness of these rulings. As I went on to the 60 homes I visited today to personally ascertain the effects that this ordinance would have on my close neighbors, I noticed a theme that a great number of these affected speak a language other than English and that were unaware of how this hearing process works and were unable to understand the footage as they do not speak the language. I am requesting that the hearings sometimes be changed into other languages if it's going to affect all of the citizens. Is it the aim of this body to alienate themselves from the population that they are ostracizing, especially when many of them are in fear of more serious repercussions? If they were to resist such a ruling, I believe this will have a polarizing effect on the community. What are the remedies being provided? Part of the goal of this legislation is, as stated, on the notice was to aid in the growth and spur the development of business within the community. Which specific businesses benefit from this legislation? What study has been done as far as the business impacts on the community? And furthermore, what study was done as to, as to make up, as to the makeup of those impacted by this legislature? I would like to have the personal opportunity to review the detailed monthly expenses, expense reports to restore trust in this council. By expense reports, I mean the itemized reports, not the basic overall budgets. I have already reviewed those and have questions about the funds remaining. Public safety. This will make me have to park my car, my child's children's van on the street, and put my husband's truck in the yard, which puts my children right on the edge of Polk Street where they just come around that stop sign. So, if my children get hit, I'm gonna hold this council personally responsible.
Thank you. Yeah, a question?
Thank you, y'all.
I want to say a very good evening to you, ladies and gentlemen. For those who don't know me, I'm Deion Devan Jones. I am in Ward Three.
I'm sorry.
And I am the youngest out of 69 grandkids of Graham Clarence Johnson, which Johnson Avenue is named after, who served with Teresa Banks and others. So, I am in the family home on Fourth Street. I've been there for 25 years. I want to thank Madam Mayor. I want to thank the council for doing an outstanding job. My Papa Johnson would have been proud of each and every one of you and wonderful for doing a great job and managing the city, giving back to the citizens. And when I have been a part of organizations before and strong, powerful force in different organizations, and I should have been up here. I haven't been up here since Chief O'Donnell was the chief, and that was my chief, Chief O'Donnell. And Superman, of course, is Detective Robinson is outstanding. Mr. Green, I want to thank Mr. Simpson as well, Simpson as well. He's done an outstanding job. When that snow came down the street, you can get out your, you can get out your driveways. It came down my street at 2:03 in the morning, and it came down there three or four or five times. I know some people in Fort Washington, Sea Pleasant, and everywhere else couldn't even get out their streets. But Glen Arden's streets were clear. I mean, you're doing an outstanding job in giving, in giving back. And Mr. James has been on a committee forever. But I want to thank y'all for giving back to the young ladies that helped out with the Christmas party. Beautiful, beautiful. You did a maclay job. I had nothing but graciousness, especially from my family, huge family. There were only four families in this town that started out. My family was one of those families, along with the Smiths and the Keners and different other great families here in the city of Glen Arden. And when, and I should have been that voice up here earlier, with me being on, you know, with my case and being on TV and different other things, running around, I, you know. But I'm up here now, but I want to thank you, and I want to thank, Mr. Green has just been doing a great job. The whole staff has just been doing a great job. And when, and the chief, the police chief have been doing a great job as well. And I'm not saying that because I'm in law enforcement too, but, but he's been doing a great job. But I also want to talk about the RPP parking. And my understanding, I made some suggestions, and I used to be the assistant supervisor for one of the most powerful organizations, which was the District of Columbia. And, and their parking regulations, whether you want to look over it and adopt some of their parking regulations, I made some suggestions to Mr. Green and everything else. And I'm just here for some suggestions and everything. Parking is a pain. And when, I've seen it over the last 25 years. And now, as far as accommodations, as far as the citizens, I agree with that. You know, you shouldn't have to park, you know, now with your child or whatever. But I just think that y'all are doing a great job. But as far as parking regulations, like, it should be in all three wards, RPP parking. And I used to enforce that RPP parking. I used to take complaints and some other things. But now, I moved on to another law enforcement organization in which I'm the supervisor of. But, but it's just been a pain in the butt. And we have some neighbors who are just so sweet, who love to work on cars and think they can do, run a chop shop in our city or have oil, or put in a whole transmission and for two days. But you know what? Superman over here took care of it, and that's Mr. Green. And took care of it. And it's ridiculous when some people parking on your street that don't even live on your street and working on cars and defimating in the back of their car. I mean, it's just ridiculous. And when, and I'm in law enforcement, but I turned it over to the right officials, and they took care of it, and the city took care of it. I mean, it's just ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. That's the type of neighbors that moved into the city I've been seeing lately. There's 18 people living in a house. You know, and they got cars everywhere, oil spots. Where have we seen oil spots on the streets of Glen Arden? I've never seen that before. And I, I was actually born in this city. We moved out and we moved back in. But there's still family on every street, and also family sat in every, every position that you're in as mayor, as council, and everything else. They continue the family tradition except for me, but anyway. But I'm just saying, it's just, it's just been ridiculous. It's just been ridiculous with that. But I made some suggestions, and I'm here if you need any additional suggestions or if you need any help. Okay? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Just to circle back, and I'm sorry, I forgot your name. What's your name?
Deion Jones.
Deion Jones, and what's your name?
I'm Mona Rose.
Mona?
Tree Rose. Tree Rose is my name.
Okay. So, I wanted to point out and welcome other speakers, but I don't see any hands. So, I'll just wait for a little bit to see if anybody else want to speak. Yeah, as you come out. I want citizens to know that this was not done in a vacuum. This was not done quick. We've had several meetings on these and probably only had maybe one or two comments. This took place over, I think, at least a couple of, it took a while. Yes, several months. And this is why I encourage citizens to become involved with what's going on in the community, because we do welcome everyone to our work sessions to be able to give feedback to a piece of legislation that we're working on so that we can capture, you know, your views and your thoughts during the public hearing. And so, this has come to a public hearing. This has taken several months to pass. And we've had several opportunities for citizens to speak, and then eventually it has become law. Now, I will say that I missed some of what you were saying in the middle, because I understand you were a bit emotional about someone laughing or, but I could come back to you after the meeting, and then we could talk about it, so. Alright, in the meantime, sir, if you could state your name and what ward you're from.
My name is Tucson Wallace. I live in Ward Three. I'm looking for some clarity on the flyer that came out. It said, "All vans and pickup trucks must be parked in the driveway at all times." And that, and that Section A of the flyer, it didn't state, it doesn't really state. I saw the checkmarks, the green checkmarks, it was okay on the flyer, but it really didn't state in A whether or not that was talking about commercial vehicles? Because I have a personal pickup truck that's mine, and I don't use it for work or anything like that, but it's parked in front of my house. Is my truck, am I okay to park my truck there? It's not, it's not a commercial vehicle. It's kind of vague. A is kind of vague. Because you talk about, up top, you talk about the racks and all these things of that nature on top of the vehicles and it being a work truck. I don't have any of that, but my, it's not a commercial vehicle. It's just my personal vehicle. And I've been parking it there for almost nine years now. So, just trying to figure out what will be allowed and what won't be allowed. Also, as far as enforcement is concerned, there are a lot of vehicles that are parked with left wheel to curb where, for, to break that down, it's where someone parks the wrong way, where they get out of their vehicle, out of their vehicle, and the curb is right here.
Yeah.
I ride a bicycle. Wow, I need to ride more. But I ride a bicycle, and it's been a few times cars have been coming out, and they're pulling out, and it almost hit me, you know. And I think that needs to be enforced also, where people can park with their right wheel to the curb, so all the vehicles are facing the same direction, because when they pull out, they can't see you. And people parking on, you can't see around the corners even. Some neighborhoods, people park on the corners, you know, and it's hard to see around the corners. So, if that can be enforced, that would be greatly appreciated. But yeah, I'm looking for some clarity on, on A.
So, I need to, I would rely on Mr. Green. Or, Madam Clerk, do you have the legislation? I mean, on, in soft copy, if you could forward that to me. Oh, you have the legislation? For the RPP? I doubt we have it, because it was an add-on at the last minute. So, could you look, research, see if you can send it to me now, please? Mr. Green, I don't recall, and councilmembers can correct me. Trucks must be in the driveway? Or can eligible trucks park on the street? If you have an answer.
He can, it's breaking it. Well, I'm looking at the legislation right now. I didn't, I didn't even know it's this stringent. But it does, we talked about that, me and Councilwoman Ferguson. But it does say driveway requirements. All vans and pickup trucks, regardless of their use or purpose, including personal use, must be parked in the owner's driveway and are not permitted to park on city streets.
Okay.
It's not a, it's not a commercial vehicle. I'm just asking, because, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. I don't use it, you know, I don't use it for anything but my personal use. It's not, it's not a work vehicle. And I understand, I understand your concept about the work trucks, because I can ride down the street and see 10 or 12 trucks, you know, and with all sorts of stuff on it. At one point, I was riding down the street, on another street, and it was a dump truck parked on the street. I don't know if that's in Glen Arden, but it's one street over from, I believe, it might be 92nd, I'm not sure. But where 92nd comes into, into the area. But I don't see the dump truck anymore. But a personal vehicle, you have a checkmark saying my car, my vehicle's okay. I don't have a van. I just have a regular pickup truck. And you have a checkmark on the flyer saying it's okay, but then you're, now you're saying it's not. I don't understand.
So, for clarity, alright, so a little bit historical context. So, the checkmark is, it's okay to park in your driveway? The genesis of this, in the same way that you're coming to argue that you should be able to park on the street, well, there are other people who would come and argue that you should not park on the street, because, not you per se, trucks, so let me correct that. Trucks should not be on the street, because they're, are taking up the entire block, and it's hard for people to come out of their driveways. So, the, the thought behind moving trucks into the driveways is for people to be able to see coming out their driveway. So, in your, in the case that you mentioned, let's say, people parking close to the, to the, to the corner, right?
Yeah.
So, in the same way that it's hard for you to see around the corner if the truck is close to the corner, it might be hard for someone coming out the driveway if that truck is too close to their driveway.
I live in a cul-de-sac, and my trucks in front of my house, there's probably from the back end of my truck, from this gentleman here to here, to my neighbor's driveway, the front end of my truck, this far. There's, there's no obstruction. Truck's not, my truck's not a, it's not a commercial vehicle. It, this just doesn't, I, I think, I think there's holes in this that need to be filled, and it's not, I don't think it's fair. You know, because I don't want to always park in my driveway. It doesn't make, it makes zero sense to me.
Completely understand.
Okay.
And so, with that, and the example that you're giving, completely understand that. The example that was given before is, you know, this is a truck, this is my driveway. I can't see who's coming out, and I might get hit. So, in your case, it's good, and in the other person's case, it, you know, it was different. As I stated before,
I'm sorry, I'm listening.
I completely welcome all of your comments. I think that they're great comments, things that we need to think about, and I appreciate it. We can take it back. We can rethink some things, amend some things, see how that we maybe implement, you know, an exception. I don't know. I'm just throwing things out there.
May I approach?
Yeah, sure.
Show you what I'm talking about? That's my vehicle.
Yep.
It's parked in front of my, I have plenty of room to get out of my driveway. My neighbors have plenty of room to get out there. It doesn't.
And so, what I was talking about, though, is, so, this driveway's right here.
Yeah.
So, and your, your truck is fine, but let's say your truck is parked a little bit further up. So, the person, other person who came to complain is talking about coming out of this driveway and not being able to see cars come down here, possibly getting an accident. I understand you don't have that, that issue.
Right, but...
But others do.
Okay, I understand that, but why, why should everybody be penalized?
Because nobody can hear you online.
I'm sorry. So, why should everybody get penalized for, it's, I'm legally parked. And I think, Mr. Green, you've been by my house with my drama that I had with the roof. Remember?
Yes.
And you come through there, my parked, my vehicle's parked there every day, and I, you know, I barely use, I only use it to cut grass. I have a rental property. I go cut the grass in my other house. You see my vehicle parked there all the time. Is it causing any issue?
This might be your opinion.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So, I mean, if this could be amended to, you know, with the traffic enforcement, for people that are violating, but if people aren't violating, that, that kind of makes sense. And that's, it's kind of, I think the way law works, instead of penalizing, just, you know, just affect the law.
Yeah.
As opposed to, you know, my truck's not, it's not, I'm not bothering anybody.
Yeah.
You know?
I understand. Thank you. And we're taking notes, so we'll, we're listening.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it.
It's just reasonableness, you know, in my, in my, the way I think, you know.
Completely understand.
Okay.
So, some have to go to other people, because you had your five minutes. And I think the, I think that's Cross Entertainment had his hand up first. So, I'm gonna go there online, then I'm gonna come back to you guys, alright? And I think I saw his hand, his hand, then your hand. Alright, so one, two, three, and four. And Cross Entertainment?
Good morning. Good evening, everyone. This is Mario Cross from Ward Three. Just had a quick question on the mayor's nominations for the election committee, and why weren't they going through a full resolution process with the council and with the citizens? Because there were several citizens that was on the list for appointment list, for resolutions, for to become on the election board. And why hasn't this officially became to the council and officially come to the citizens for a vote?
Do you have a comment based on the items that are on the agenda?
You're doing the swearing-in or doing the election items. Am I correct?
I, I am not swearing in anyone, and I'm not doing any election items. I welcome your comments for anything that's on the agenda.
That's all I have.
Sir? State your name and ward, and you have five minutes. Sit your name in Ward and you have five minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is uh James Seward, living now, I think, for Ward One on Eccles Avenue. I have a pickup truck, just like my my other man over here, there's not a ladder on it, it's got a rack on it. I've been there for thirty years, I always had this do, had this truck. I don't do work with it, I only clean my roof and my gutters with it, with the ladder. But I see, got peoples in there, we got cones up for parking, don't park in here because I got my cones here. I see all this stuff goes on, but on my behalf of it, you said you can't get around the truck, but I'm looking at a van. There's a lot more, my truck is open, it ain't got, it's, the whole back is open on it, but you got vans that covers the whole thing. How they can get around the van if they can't get around my truck? It, and I got three tickets on my truck for two hundred dollars each for park there. And I went to court and I showed the judge my ladder, my truck, they said I was taking up space. How can I take up space, no more space than anybody else? I don't have a trailer behind it. I got a picture of it, if you want to see it, it's, it's.
Sure.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't get it. So I, you know, that's my forehead on it, like I said, we got cones out there, nobody's saying, you got Virginia tags out there that peoples running around, got some cars, they haven't moved in in years, I know. So I'm, I, you know, it it's just my opinion that I'm I'm bringing out there. I I don't get it. When I came in, I I tried, I know I tried before to get, uh when those uh garage covers in the driveway. They said I had to have uh two, two or three permits, I had to go do the county permit and Glenard permit or whatever. I tried to get that done, then the cop would come in and then everything shut down, they told me I couldn't do that, so I had to cancel all that. But peoples up the street got them, but that was done before I get there, I I get that. But you know, it's just some things I I I just don't get and I would like to know to find some correct answers to it, maybe, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, I I I don't know what your truck look like, uh looks like.
I got a picture of it right here. And and it's alright, who would you want to see it?
Sure, I'll take a look at it. And Mr. Green, do you know his situation? Okay.
It's a green truck.
Okay.
And 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 I don't see where I'm taking up more space than anything else.
Okay, so, and Mr. Green can uh verify this. And and was that ticket from the city or was that ticket?
It was from the city.
It was from the city?
And I also got a torn, a sticker on it.
Was that recent?
No, it was, it was back, several, maybe several months ago.
Several months ago.
Bought the ticket down here to the cop, to the police, to the station. And the lady asked me, so would you park on the grass? And I said, no, I was parked on the street. And she, that uh, some guy came to me that said he was to.
Can you go back to the mic so everyone can hear you?
Yes, I, I was, my truck was parked down the street, just like, just like I was showing you, and I got three tickets on it. I took that to court and and that was thrown out. Then I came back, I got a a a torn thing on it. I brought that down here, but the uh, the chief, I was talking to some lady there and she, I was parked on the grass and I said, no. And the chief looked at and he said, give me the ticket, I got, I I'll take care, I mean, give me the a torn thing, I I'll take care of it, you won't hear nothing else from it. And I did. But now this, now some mess has stirred up.
Yeah. Mr. Green, can you take a look at that and you can correct me if I'm wrong? Is that allowed by the county?
Yes, it's allowed by the county, there's no county ordinance that I'm aware of that's regulating this. This is in violation of the city ordinance because it has the uh, the external equipment on it, which she said is there, which it is actually there. And so that would need to be removed and then his vehicle would need to be parked in the driveway based on the new ordinance that was passed.
It's also my understanding, at least, and I could be wrong, that when we spoke last time, you said that there was a county rule that there couldn't be ladders on the truck.
Not the county.
Not the county, so it's just the city?
Just the city, yes.
Okay, because, alright, we'll talk later.
So you're, so you're saying that I can, I have to take the ladders off, the rack?
That's the external, the external equipment that's there, that was added on, that has to be removed and the vehicle has to be parked in the driveway.
Oh, why? Why would I have to park my truck in the driveway? It, it, that just don't make sense, it's, if you got a, matter of fact, right here, the guy got a van behind me and you can see around that, you can't see around that van. But my truck, you can see right through it. But I, I think it's just, you know, it's just, I don't know what it, see, like, I've been just picked on ever since I've been, I've been there thirty years, but it seems like now it just start to getting picked, I I I now just wanted some answers because I don't want to be going in the house, going to see him come back, my truck not towed or two hundred dollar ticket on it, you know, I just, I just, put some ass.
And we could look into the tickets, uh Mr. Green said that he wasn't the one to issue those tickets, so we'll have to see. I mean, you could share them with Mr. Green with to see if that actually came from the city. Um and then if it was erroneously uh put on your car, then we can remedy that, that's, that's fine. But if it was something done by the county or something, then we'll, we'll, he can guide you to which, you know, where you need to go for that.
Okay.
But I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'll stay afterwards and I'll listen to you, okay? Alright, because then everybody's gonna want to do it and I can't. Sir?
Uh good evening, Council, my name is Kevin, I'm pretty new to the city of Glenard and political scene, just trying to figure out what's going on here. Uh wanted to chill with you guys tonight.
What, what are you from?
Uh I live right next to Ardmore Elementary School.
Okay.
So where does that, who's my representative?
That should be three.
Alright, yeah, three is really deep tonight. Uh so just a quick question, I'm looking at ordinance oh six twenty twenty five, it's, it just caught my eye and it looks like you, Mr. Curtis, are the sponsor. Um so it looks like you all are looking to increase your stipends by what, like four thousand eight hundred dollars? So as just a citizen, I'm just curious, in the midst of everything we have going on economically, politically, I just want to know why you feel, if you could explain to me, why you feel that that's a good uh use of our taxpayer dollars, just curious.
Okay, thank you. Is that your only question?
Oh yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh thank you. Um so I did introduce that legislation. Um I think that the stipend is uh, you know, set pretty low for all the um things that council members incur to um to serve in this role. In looking and comparing to other municipalities, it fluctuates, some go up to seventeen, some are right where we are. But with costs increasing, um and, you know, I think council members give up a lot and endure a lot to to serve the city of Glenard. I thought, my opinion, which was why I sponsored the legislation, that increasing it uh to um twelve thousand dollars was adequate. It falls below the the top end range of what's out there. It's above the low end range, but it does accommodate um servants who serve in this position as as mayor or a council member, whether they need uh to um hire a babysitter, whether they need to, you know, go from to Annapolis and back, what whatever expenses are incurred for council members to serve in this role one. These servants spend countless hours um serving the needs of the citizens. The mayor and council does not receive a salary, so I'm not asking for for these servants to receive a salary. But I am asking that they receive an adequate stipend to be able to support um their needs to serve in this capacity. So that is why I sponsored that legislation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you were next. Oh yes, um and just for point of clarity, that's not for this council, that's for the incoming council, so whoever runs next time. Yeah, it's not for us, so we didn't change our stipend, that's only for whoever decides to run next time. So I just wanted to clarify, because I don't want you to think that I was sponsoring legislation to raise our current stipend, that is not the case at all.
Who are you running?
I. This, yeah, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir, if you could state your name and.
My name is Ernest Brown. I'm in Ward Three, I live in the Woodmore Town Center. And I have a Chevy, a nineteen ninety-nine Chevy S ten pickup that's parked in front of my house, not sure what the issue is. Uh I got this flyer in the mail and part A of it says, all vans and pickup trucks must be parked in the driveway at all times. They should weigh no more than eight thousand, eight thousand five hundred pounds. No street parking for these types of vehicles. Then at the bottom, it has a green checkmark for uh a pickup truck. Now, does that green checkmark mean that you can park or you can't park? Because you have two red uh Xs on uh different type of vehicles.
So thank you, sir, and I'm, I'm looking at my phone because I have the flyer, so I don't want you to think I'm not.
Oh, no, no.
Alright, so on A, it says, all vans and pickup trucks must be in the driveway at all times. They should weigh no more than eighty-five hundred pounds, no street parking for these type of vehicles. B, all vans and pickup trucks should be clear of any external equipment such as um racks, ladders, and any other added structures. So the pictures under that is just giving an example of uh what's allowable. So the um, the first two pictures with the X have racks and ladders on it, while the other two, the van and a pickup truck, does not. That does not necessarily conflict with A. A still is in effect where no vans or trucks can park on the street.
So that's what I'm not understanding, sir, because I've been living there for nine years. My truck is parked out there for nine years. It doesn't block anybody, it doesn't stop the snowplow from coming through, it doesn't stop the trash truck from coming through. It's never been an issue, it's never, they've never come close to hitting my truck or anybody else's truck that's on where I live, and I live near Mr. Wallace. And so I'm just not understanding why now, all of a sudden, I cannot have my truck parked on the street. Another issue, I'm wondering if if there is a family over there that has a nice sized house and they have children that have cars also. And so if they have daughters, that they don't want their daughters to park on the street so that for safety reasons, then why can't they, if they have two cars parked in their garage, their children's car parked in the driveway, and you have a pickup truck, why can't it be on the street if it's a small pickup truck? I'm not understanding, because safety should be the number one concern. And especially if you have daughters that work, come home late, and they have to park on the, in the driveway, that's safety for them. So I just wish that, you know, you all can be a little more considerate in whoever's making this decision about families in general also. Because, like I said, I have, I have neighbors that I know of that have children that park in their driveway, so they have to put their truck on the street. And I know if I had, if my children were still at home, if my daughter was still at home, I would want her to park in the driveway, which means I would have to put my small S ten pickup on the street. And that should not be a problem for a person that's been living there for nine years, it's never been an issue, I pay my taxes and all that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh Mr. Brown? I will go to Ms. Hunter, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone, can you hear me? Um my name is Alita, I live in Ward One, um I'm also commenting on the um the parking permits. I have a question, so let's say you have a Hummer, right? Is that a vehicle that cannot be on the street? Um I'm asking that question because what I find is a bigger issue in Glenard, and I'm in Ward One if I didn't say that, is that you have people that have these Hummers and these work trucks and they don't care how they park. You come off of um seven oh four, turn about a seven eleven, you coming down to Hayes. There's at times Hummers that park, a big Hummer that parks right there. Two times I've almost been hit because I could not see what was coming around the corner, but I didn't go flying out. But my thing would be, wh- when are we going to cite these vehicles, and I know that's not on there, but when are we going to cite these vehicles that are parking any kind of way? Because to me, that's the bigger problem with people with these large vehicles, don't care how they park, and then once you turn by the apartments, they park right there to the very end of that curve. You go down the hill on Hayes, you turn on Johnson Avenue after you go through the potholes, you turn on Johnson Avenue and it's cars on both sides. So where I'm excited about the parking permits that are coming, that is on the um, that's on there for. I'm, I would like to know which streets are getting the parking permits because um I I saw, I read it, but I didn't see where the list of streets were, maybe we're not there yet, or maybe it was an attachment I didn't open. But um I do also understand the concern with some residents who they've had their trucks for years and, you know, they use it for you know, a purpose here, a purpose there, whatever, but they never had an issue before, but because of the influx of people that are moving in and they may have, and I'm not talking about a Ward Three where the homes are bigger, I'm talking about right here on Hayes Street where you got people, probably about fifteen people living in one house, and they have about four trucks and they park them in front of the apartments. They leave their driveway open and they park them in front of the apartments and it's one truck after another after another. So when you have these single-family homes that are becoming multi-unit homes, then you have a problem because everybody's working, everybody's working in there so they can help pay the mortgage, so you got all these people in there working and they got work trucks and stuff. So whereas I agree with um making improvements with parking and making it safer for everyone, I I hear the residents and I see some of the concerns that I didn't see before. And another question, so if I have an Expedition, is that, that gotta be parked in the driveway too? That's a question, I mean, I'm, but I mean, it's a good question because it if if it's not blocking, if it's not blocking anybody and now, I had, let's say, I don't have it anymore, but let's just say I had it for ten years and it's been parked there and now all of a sudden, don't laugh at me, because it is, I'm gonna have to move it off of the street, but yeah, what if I can't park it in the driveway? I mean, what if that's somebody's only, their sole perp, their one transportation? And let's say they can't park, or let's say it's two cars, well, let's say they can't park it in the driveway. Let's say it's someone else in the household that needs to be closer to the driveway in order to get into the house. So it's just some things to think about. I think that's all I, oh, and now also back to the federal government, that five thousand dollars for um federal employees that may have been, um lost their job, that was on there. My thing is, I I, I'm trying to follow the news and it seems like a lot of those people want to be allowed to go back to work or they've been ordered to um send them back to work. want to be allowed to go back to work, or they've been ordered to send them back to work. Or for them to go back to their jobs. So, how soon are we moving out on this five, on this five thou... I'm sorry. On this $5,000, because people are being ordered back to work. I know some people who were let go one of the first rounds, and they're getting ready to go back to work. There's some people that are in the process of getting unemployment. So, I'm just kind of like, are we moving too fast? All about helping people. All about, Lord knows, I'm all about helping people. But are we moving too fast with this? Because a lot of these orders, some of this stuff is being rolled back, and people are being told, "You're coming back to work." So, I think that's all I have, but thank you all.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, Expedition is not a pickup truck, so just heads up on that. Did you have something else to say? Okay. I'm sorry, I have to go.
He can answer anything that I ask about him. So I was just kind of wondering, was that kind of just glossed?
No, it's not, it's, it's, it's not glossed over.
Especially with the situation of people having daughters and stuff, they're living in a home, and they have to park their car in the driveway for safety. And have to put their pickup truck on the street.
No, I, I didn't forget about you. Because there are so many people speaking on this topic. I wanted to allow everybody, because there are a lot of crossing points. So, I wanted to be able to hear more people with that, and then just touch on all of them, so we don't hold up. But I haven't forgotten about you. I got your name written down over here and everything. And if you have anything else to say, I'll stay behind and listen to you. I, I can't, let's see. Ms. Paula?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, I'm battling the cold right now, so I might sound a little bit weird. But I'm also here in regards to the new parking ordinance. I'm sorry, my name is Paula Rodriguez. I'm from Ward One. And I'm here on behalf of my parents, and they have been homeowners in Glen Arden for over ten years. I've always loved living in this neighborhood. Sorry. As there is so much camaraderie and neighborliness, in all my years of living here, I've never had any issues. However, I can't help but express my discontent with the new parking ordinance. I understand that this is something that the council has been working on for a while, but for most homeowners, it was a bit surprising to receive a notice that stated that we were already in violation of the ordinance. And I understand that as residents, we should be more involved. But unfortunately, that's just not the reality for most of us, which is why we're coming to you now, as we're receiving this new ordinance flyer. We own a small pickup truck that has elevated rails, and we've always parked it on their, on the street in our entire time of living here. So I guess my question for the council is, on top of having to park our pickup truck in the driveway, we now also have to remove the rails? Because if so, I don't understand why we'd have to do that if the pickup truck is already in our driveway on private property.
Okay, is that their only question?
Yes.
Okay. In, in accordance with the, I think, now, Ms. Green, you can come back up here, please, because you can correct me if I'm wrong. I haven't forgotten about you. You just have one question. I'm just getting her out the way. So, commercial vehicles are defined as a particular vehicle. And from a county perspective, that is banned, correct?
Yes, it depends on exactly what the commercial vehicle is. For an example, you can't have a vehicle that's over eighty-five hundred pounds. You can't have a vehicle that has advertising on it, that has anything more than the name of the business. And it can't be more than four inches high. So if you take like a dollar bill, and you measure it, the name of the business that's on the vehicle, it can't be more than four inches high. So that's how the county is now classifying commercial vehicles. But I'll also add just one caveat to that, is that this type of zoning regulation is constantly changing. So it's one way today, and next week, they're changing to something else. But that's the latest, as it relates to commercial vehicles for the county.
Okay. Thank you. So, to answer part of your question, there's some things that we do not have control over. So if your vehicle is a commercial vehicle, then if it's a county rule, then we cannot overrule the county. So that's, that's one. If it's, if it's under, then we can discuss it. And I'll just put it here. I kind of think she, Ms. Paula, talked on it. This was discussed over months in the past. And, and this is one of the reasons why I advocate for everybody in the community to participate in these meetings. There might be one, two, or three people in the four years that I've been on here who are consistent to come into these meetings and hear what we have. I mean, because we're human, we have ideas. We, we sit here and we listen to the one or two or three citizens that come in, and those two or three citizens may have a problem with the parking. And so, we listen, there's, we propose the legislation, we send out the advertisement, "Please, we want to hear your voices on it." But if we're only hearing voices from the other side, then, you know, though we serve the entire community, they have a mountain of evidence. So we want to work on who, you know, making things better for all of our citizens. I, I'm glad that you guys came out here today. It highlights that we need to take a second look at this legislation and probably make some revisions. I, I will still, at the same time, encourage you guys, after this meeting, thank you for coming, but continue to be involved, because there's going to be another idea next month that you may not agree with. And it'll be far helpful to us to hear your opinion and your feedback. We might have an idea that we think is great, but you might combat that idea and highlight that, "Oh, man, the idea that I had wasn't as great as I, as I thought it was." So, I encourage you guys, again, thank you for highlighting these comments and highlighting the issues that you're having. We will take another look at this. But I encourage you guys to continue to be involved, to continue to come to these meetings, so that we can have your input before these things are passed. I, to, sir, to your, I'm sorry, I think it's Mr. Brown. I, yeah, I understand. I have a daughter. I would want her to park in the driveway, and if I had a pickup truck, I would park on the street. I'm that type of guy. So I understand completely what you're talking about. So, thank you for your comments. We will, I'm, I'm gonna go up to you in a second. Like I said, we will take a, a second look at this, after hearing your comments, and see what we can do to accommodate everyone. Because there's still the people on the other side of the aisle who have problems with trucks. Now, the law says, though, that eighty-five hundred pounds is county law. We can't do anything about that. But with some of the other things that are not in the county regulations, then we could take a second look at that. Councilman Gill?
Council President, if I may, I know that there, I know there was, you guys can't hear me?
Yeah, just bring it closer.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. Council President, if I may, because I, I want to stay on this topic, but I do know that there are other citizens who didn't speak yet, so I'll yield my time until they finish, until they have an opportunity to speak, if that's okay?
Okay.
All right.
One second. Ms. Wilson was first. Good evening. If you could just speak up, please, so the people online can hear you.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm Celestine Wilson, and I'm a citizen in Glen Arden. And I have a, a problem. Well, I sent out a letter dated February 17th to the council members, and I received, for those of you that I received comments from, I appreciate that. Thank you very much for responding to me. But I did not receive anything from the majority of folks. But I had an issue with the legislation dealing with the, with the, what do you call it? The employment, the, the retirement for the, for the, for the employees. And also, for the salary, for the, the increase in the stipend for the, for the council. And as the gentleman spoke, because of the time, the times that we're in, then it's kind of like, not the right time for, for those types of things. Although I, I, my question dealt with, when it came to the retirement for the employees, I said that I thought that the amount that you all wanted to increase to was not right. It was too much. And because we are in a time of uncertainty, and that we are in a time when we don't know when we're gonna need monies, we don't know what. But, yes, things, the prices are increases, but prices are increasing for everybody. And my question to you all was, how will we pay for the retirement plan? And I didn't receive that answer. So, because when you're talking about retirement, you're not talking about just for this year, you're talking for years to come. And so my question was, how are you going to, how are we gonna pay for that? And also, I just said that it's a time when people are losing their jobs. And I don't think that it's always that we have race to do something. I think that when people lose their jobs, as it was stated in the, in the work session, people don't always have income, extra income, spare income. So we don't know when those people will return back to work. Some of, some people might return back to work, but all people are not gonna return back to work. And so, it's times like those that we should be able to, to help. And my question was, because I said, are we gonna take this from the reserve? And that we shouldn't take it from the reserve. And so my question, which I would like Councilman Herring to, to address is, what is our reserve? What is considered our reserve? What is considered the budget now? Where is the opa money that was rolled over into salaries, from my understanding? What is that being used for? How is it going to be, yeah, just how is it gonna be utilized? Because if that was there for the citizens, then why can't that money be utilized for relief for federal workers? So, and also, Mr. Herring wanted to bring back the, the tax rebate. If that money is already in the budget, if it's not coming out of reserve, or is it coming out of reserve? Those are my questions. And just real quick, I just want to say, if we, it seems like the council is considering making adjustments to the, possibly to the, this, what everybody's been talking about, then you also might want to consider people who own fixed incomes. I, I have a vehicle in, that I have to put in the driveway, a custom van in the driveway. My husband is disabled. So in the past, he was parking in the driveway, but now he's gonna have to park out on the street with his, and try and walk with his disability to the, to the car. So if that's the case, and, and that will be an additional expense. I talked to Mr. Green before the meeting started, to find out, what do I have to do to go about getting a, a permit? So that's gonna cause us an additional expense. And so, if you're considering making adjustments, then you might want to consider that as well, because it would not be fair for you to make an adjustment for this citizen and not make an adjustment for that one. So, if you're gonna reconsider your program, your, your, what's your company, you have to consider the whole city, the city as a whole. You can't just have special people. You have to treat all citizens the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you, can I ask a question? Because I think I missed a part of it, about your husband parking on the street. So he has a, a van, he has a car that he wants to park on the street?
No, we have to park our vehicle on the street. The, the regular driving, the regular car, we have to park it on the street now. We had been parking it in the driveway, but we also have a custom van that was being parked on the street, but because of the new law, then we had, now we have to park it in the driveway. So in order to accommodate both, both variables here, I have, we have to have additional expenses. We will have additional expenses in order to comply with, in order to comply with what the city is saying, and, and also in order for my husband to be able to, not to have to walk so far to getting to in and out of his vehicle.
Okay. Thank you. Mr., Mr. Herring?
Yeah.
Councilman Herring?
Let me say, when I brought up the legislation that I brought up for the federal, federal relief workers and for the, to extend the tax rebate, I'm looking at what we originally budgeted for the tax rebate. We originally budgeted for the tax rebate $1.5 million. Of that $1.5 million, I think we spent $400,000 so far, Mr. Treasurer? About $400,000. That leaves $1.1 million left. So I'm saying, take that $1.1 million and appropriate $400,000 to extend the program, because not more, we had maybe, maybe fifty percent of the people took advantage of that program. So I'm saying, use the, take part of the $1.1 million and use that, use $200,000 toward the rebate program to extend it. That leaves us with $600,000. Take $250,000 of that, $600,000 left over, and put that toward the federal relief workers program, which will leave you with about $350,000. So, I'm not trying to say dip into the reserves. We actually already budgeted $1.5 million for that program. And even though the year has ended, that money is still here, because we didn't spend it all. So I'm just saying, allocate what we have, what we've already budgeted. Now, we do have reserve, I'll leave that to the treasurer, because he has the actual numbers, what we have in reserve, but I also would like to get clear what we have, and I think he cleared it up last time, what we had in opa money, which was like $2.4, $2.4 million, something like that, that, you know, we charged against payroll, which now is, now there's $2.4 million in our general fund. So, I'm not even looking at touching that. I'm looking at touching what we already appropriated, what we already budgeted previously, and just pulling off of that to, to fund these programs.
Point of clarity?
Yes, Councilman Gill?
I just wanted to say to my colleague, Mr. Herring, that just so we don't get tied up into anything that we haven't agreed upon, the $250, maybe more. I don't want us to, I don't want, I don't want the citizens to hear $250, and then, should we agree to move forward with the program? And we say that, you know what, there are more federal employees or more citizens who have been impacted by the administration, the Trump administration, and we feel that $250 may be le, too, too little. I just want to just say that on record.
But, yeah, just right now, if, for anybody who were at the meeting last week, I was saying $250, but it depends on what the council wants to do.
Could I just say one thing? I apol, I just want to say this. I apologize if I did not come across clearly, because I was rushing trying to get everything out that I had to get out. So if, if I was not clear, because I did see some frowns, if I was not clear, then please let me know.
Thank you. So, thank you for your comments. I, I too am in favor of helping people. I see there are two hands. Of helping our citizens, helping those who are hurting. At the same time, I consider, I consider all the residents of Glen Arden, the family of Glen Arden. I also consider those who work in the city of Glen Arden, so that we can be safe, so that our roads can be cleared from potholes eventually, so that stop signs can be up, so the city can run smoothly. I consider them a part of the Glen Arden family as well. I, I think, and this is why I sponsored that legislation they talked about of retirement, I think it's a slap in the face to our, our extended family who served this community day in and day out, who are here at Glen Arden, they... community day in and day out, who are here at Glen Arden Day, serving overtime, um, doing all they can to make sure that the citizens of Glen Arden are well-served. I think it's a slap in the face to them to, to not address basic employment salary needs for a long time. The citi, the, the staffing, uh, the staff of the city of Glen Arden, including the police department, have been severely underpaid. This council has worked to incorporate, uh, adequate payment scale, uh, and, and people were reclassified and people, to as, to the extent we could, we put people in, uh, we increased their, their salaries, so they can be above the poverty line in some cases, and have an adequate wage. Uh, now you imagine people who have been working in the city of Glen Arden for quite some time, who have been working at that lower rage, uh, wage, I'm sorry, uh, and have only been getting 2.5% for retirement. You cannot retire on 2.5%. And especially if you're underpaid. So if I'm getting paid 30,000 dollars and you give me 2.5%, and I serve my butt off and work here for 20 years, I can't do anything with that at the end of my life cycle, at the end of my professional life cycle. Um, so I am a huge advocate on, for employees, uh, for fair wages, um, and I think we made the right step forward in, in, in implementing a, a, a salary classification. I think the next step now, um, is to give people, um, a fair retirement packet. Now, for clarity, this retirement packet requires to have, uh, for staff members to have skin in the game. So for 2.5%, we, this legislation is to, is proposing to make that from 2.5 to 3. That's not a lot. The max is 7. Where does that 7 come from? So 3% you automatically get from the city. That's an increase of a half percent. We used to give 2.5, now we're gonna give automatic 3. What we're saying now is, we will give you an extra 4% to a max of 7% if you contribute 4%. So if Mr. Stewart says, okay, thank you for 3%, now I am going to take 4% of my salary and save for my future, I'm going to reward that and say, thank you, we're going to invest in your future as well, and match that 4%. If he does an extra 2%, then I'm only gonna do, the city's only gonna do 2%. So it's not, uh, a fixed 7% amount. There's a fixed part is 3%, the 4% is variable. If you contribute nothing to your retirement, then, then we're not gonna contribute anything over that 3%. So I think that that is fair. Um, I think that, that is adequate, and now, well, not adequate, if I could give more, I could give more, but I know that we have to balance things. Uh, if I could pay our staff more for all that they do, I will pay them more, but I know that we can't afford, but so much. But what we can do is have a livable wage and a reasonable retirement. And that is the intent of the legislation that I've proposed for the retirement of a max of 7%. And again, that's 3% fixed, 4% only if you contribute. All right. So with that. No, no, I'm sorry, gentleman behind you. I'm sorry. Mr., Donald Mann, please state your name, what ward you're from. You got five minutes.
Donald Mann Williams, Ward 1. Uh, greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
I, I don't come here to bother y'all much. Matter of fact, at all. If I have anything generally to say, I say it behind closed doors, because you get things done more behind closed door than you, than you in public. And I know that, being three-term mayor and a four-term city councilman, here in this great city. So with that, I got a few things I wanna say. I'm gonna piggyback on what you just said, um, President, that what you're proposing for the retirement, tried to do before I left the council in 2021, and I think it's great, and I think this council should support that. I never want anything to happen like what happened to Ms. Moore, when she retired from this city. It was a tragedy for her to spend over 30 some years and have very little retirement. So we should reward our workers. I want to comment on the parking issue, and not so much. Y'all have the pros and the cons. I think it's a mistake, the way y'all did it, um, cause when you did it, this, about five, six years ago, uh, we had issues in the county enforcing it, and people challenged it, the way we did it with no, no, um, commercial vehicle being parked in the city, and we looked, we looked bad in the courts. So I think it was wise to look at it and reconsider it, but I would say, what Ms. Hunter said, the main issue that I see as I walk or patrol the city, parking to the curb, in the, in most cities, DC, you have signs saying you can't park from here to the, if we do that on our, all our city streets, I think that would be a safer, especially going around a corner. And that's, that's simple legislation or administrative action from the mayor, one or the other. It's too easy. I think that's going to alleviate a lot of your problems. If you just, don't worry about the size of the vehicle, but just parking from the curb. Now you're gonna have other issues, cause people wanna park in front of your house. People, the spot in front of your house is not your park, your spot. It's not. All right? It's the city's, it's not yours. I know you wanna claim it, but it's not. I also wanna confirm, I wanna congratulate this council for, uh, supporting the work that y'all do and the compensation stipend, or whatever you wanna call it, to be raised. Uh, I, I think it's lower than it should be. C Pleasant is much smaller, and they're 15, 5. And our city is bigger, greater, in my opinion, and they're, and you have more meetings than they have, and y'all don't wanna do 12. So look at that. I saw, I also want to talk about, um, again, the retirement. My question, I don't care if you have this system, if y'all don't do literacy to the workers, they won't participate. So therefore, I encourage you to have some literacy to the workers, if y'all pass this, cause I think it's fair. But if y'all don't counsel the workers to do this, then I, number one, a lot of them won't be able to afford to put 2% or 4% right off the bat, so y'all don't worry about that. But if those who do, you need to counsel them and see, and to encourage them to do so. It's only gonna benefit, benefit them. And extending the property, I agree with Mr. Herring, stuff with the, uh, helping out the workers and helping out the, uh, extending the tax credit. It's a shame only 50% of people, as much it was advertised, took advantage of that. Cause it was advertised, but only 50%, that's, that's bad. So continue to do that, I got 24 seconds left. I think it's not wise, when I see that you codify, we did it before, rules of the gold rule. They shouldn't be law. They should be regulations, procedure, but not law. These are special order for rules of, of operation, should be SOP, it shouldn't be law. Uh, my time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I have one hand online, Ms. Crutchfield.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Cross. Uh, questions? Well, first of all, comment, I was so, my heart was so taken by the young lady who was crying out about the parking, so you all please consider her comments and everyone else's comments about the parking. It doesn't affect me, but when things are, affect others, I saw, when I received it in the mail, I looked at it and I'm thinking, wow, this is gonna really put some people, um, I should say, speaking up, because it was, it was, I was on the meetings, I, I come to the meetings. Can you hear what I'm saying? Can you hear me now, Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
President Curtis?
Yes, I can hear you. We can, we can all hear you.
Okay, I saw your facial expressions, just making sure. I, um, I come to the meetings and I, I, I listen out, and I think this, the, the, the parking came into play, you all have been talking about it, I agree, but it really came into play last meeting, you all really kinda made a decision, and then I saw the information come in the mail, and I was shocked that it had transpired so quickly. So just to say, with that being said, please consider the, the persons who have gotten up and spoken and who have these issues with that, because, you know, you can hurt people's business or, you know, their livelihoods. So please reconsider or consider ways that you can make changes to that. As well as, I, I, I'm looking at the resolutions about the persons for the board. Now I just have a question for clarification. How are the board members, the mem, not the board members, the members for the Board of Elections appointed? Is it undone by council? Is it done by mayor? I'm just curious, because I see, and I noticed that you need 10. Are you adding, how, I'm just, I'm just curious how you're putting people on the board?
The board is understaffed, so, the board is understaffed, so we're adding people to the Board of Elections.
Okay, how's that done? Is that done with, uh, you all, or is it done with the mayor? How's the, I'm just curious?
I'm sorry. Yes, the council has to, to vote, which is why it's a resolution, uh, to add the four people who have been added, the council has to vote to add them in.
Okay, so are we, we have our total number of, and this is my last question, I'm sorry to bother you, but is this, we have our 10 members on the Board of Elections? Cause it says 10, I read your resolution.
All right, with these four, uh, I think I'll put our total at eight.
Right? So do we, can, um, citizens, um, ask and give you all some names? How does that work?
If you wanna volunteer, then, uh, then we would, uh, consider it, uh, and move from there.
You mean volunteer? I'm, I'm planning on running for one of those seats, so not to volunteer for the Board of Elections, that's why I'm questioning what's going on.
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, Councilwoman Gill?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President, hopefully you all can hear me. Um, I just want to thank all the citizens who came out here. I'm always grateful anytime citizens come out here, but in particular today, I did not expect to see so many citizens, um, coming in until my colleague over here to my left, um, made the request to amend the, the agenda. So I want to just thank you all for just coming here and speaking your truths. I want to also give some level of additional transparency to how we got here. This is about the commercial, the, the, the commercial vehicles, um, parking stuff that everybody's been talking about. I want to say that I've heard every single one of you, every single one of you. I also wanna say that there are certain things that are within our control, and there are certain things that are not within our control. As far as what was within my control, I can just speak for myself. I remember when the conversation, or conversations started about the commercial vehicles, I remember years ago, before I was even sitting over here, I was in, in the audience, um, amongst the many people who were against what was happening. I do not have a commercial vehicle, I do not have a pickup truck, this legislation does not impact my home directly, but if anyone really follows any legislations that I introduce or push forth, half the time I don't qualify for any of the things that I push for. So if there's a grant, I don't qualify for it. If there's a rebate, I don't, for, to rehab a home, I don't qualify for it, because I look at others more, I, I feel, I look at others more than, than I should myself. Um, but that's, that's, I, I just wanna offer that. When the conversations started, again, as we were here, the energy was very much no commercial vehicles, no pickup, no tractor, none, 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 right? And I would implore everyone who is sitting here, who's just, you know, who, who is having the shock factor of, of getting the mail, the, the notice in the mail, that, um, to look at the YouTube, the past YouTube meetings, or the past, um, minutes that were captured online or, or on the web, because you'll see how much of a spirited conversations they, they, there was. I will say that I, I heard, I heard you, Ms. Street Rose, um, in particular, I am a child of immigrants, I, I, my, my mother, my family, they have accents. So I, I hear you, and, and, um, I know what perception looks like, so I, I'll, and, and I did make a point to say certain things. I am intentionally not looking at you, because I don't want to get emotional as well, right? So I just wanna tell you that I feel you. And one of the things that I, I stated, and, and other colleagues as well, was there are people's livelihoods that could be impacted by this, right? So it's good that I heard a lot of people who were saying that this is their personal vehicles, right? But, um, I still was on the, the, the line of compromise, because while we were, or while I at least was advocating for, for that, I also saw, and I believe my colleague, Council President said this, I also saw a lot of citizens who were coming here, who were saying how the cars being parked in the streets were impacting them, how it would be impacting seniors, how, um, their home health aid vehicles could not find park, they couldn't come in, into the streets and find parking. So there was a lot of that, that had to also be taken into consideration. And there was also an outcry of getting people to actually come here to voice their concerns, like you all have done tonight, but the other voices were here, and you alls weren't, if that, if that makes sense. This is not a fault, I'm just, I'm just saying how we, how we got here. So ultimately, we then had to look at the rule of law, and while there was one resolution that was introduced, there was also another resolution that was introduced. You'll see 8,500, 8,500 on that flyer, the original resolution was for 10,000. Okay? And what we all need to know is state law, so Maryland state law says 10,000, as far as commercial veh, what's the finest commercial vehicle, anything over 10,000. Prince George's County says 8,500. So where we came in as a council, and I, I have to, to, um, call out Mr. Green, who presented this to us, is Prince George's County saying that it's 8,500, our charter says we have to go by what Prince George's County says, right? So this is not, CAT could want 20,000, 10,000, 9,500, you know, um, my colleagues down to my left may want different numbers, but we had to abide by that, right? Prince George's County also says that you cannot have vans, tractor trailers, et cetera, et cetera, parked on residential streets. So this is not us who said no parking on residential streets, right? So where we came up with what I felt was a compromise, because some folks who didn't want the commercial veh, didn't want pickup, didn't want none of this at all in the city, we were like, well, we have to, okay, I understand for seniors or for others, like if the parking, people can't find parking, because there's 90 million, um, of these, I, I think Ms. Hunter and, and, and others talked about like the different cars that were just parked and, and stacked and stuff, and she presented pictures. Well, we had a legislation that was introduced by Mr. Herring, and I believe it was Councilwoman Farid who co-sponsored, about the parking permits, right? That was one. But the other part was, well, I cannot go to sleep at night knowing that if someone has a vehicle, a working vehicle, pickup, whatever it is, and they need it for their livelihood, and we're saying, no, it can't be here. I, I, I get that there are certain things that are law, I'm a legislator, but I also state that slavery was the law, and that doesn't mean that it was right. So, and I said this on record several times. So the compromise was. So the compromise was, okay, well, we'll just have people park their, whatever they can park on the street, let them park it in their driveway. Can't, you know, still can't please everyone, but knowing how it started to where it is now, that's where it was, uh, uh, what we felt was a compromise. That doesn't mean that, and, and, and I have a daughter, I have a son, and my daughter is of age where she's driving. And I feel all of you, I really, really do. I just wanted to say that this was not a, a decision that was made overnight. It was some conversations well after council meetings where it was spirited and intense. But I do agree that we probably missed the mark on certain parts of how this was rolled out. And I thank you all for just, you know, voicing your concerns and giving me the opportunity to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring.
Yeah, I just, I want to speak on the commercial vehicles also. Because I was originally, I was the one that originally brought the legislation, which was, mine was actually six thousand pounds or less, and it was commercial vehicles. That's all we were looking at. My piece of legislation would have looked at removing them from the city. It did not address pickups, it did not address vans, you could still park those in the city. It was commercial vehicles. And the reason for that is because, again, we were having issues with parking. So now, this piece of legislation actually puts the, you know, commercial, put commercial vehicles in your driveway, which puts more cars on the street, you know, then we got to do a parking program to regulate that. But the whole is, the whole thing I focused on was commercial vehicles in my, in my previous legislation. It was not, you know, this legislation is actually a little bit more restrictive than what I proposed, because I don't see if somebody has a commercial pickup, I mean, not a passenger pickup truck, because, you know, everybody's driving those now, and that's the new end thing. You know, that's, sometimes that's a family car, that should be, you should be able to park that. But, you know, I was focusing on commercial vehicles, any, any vehicles that had lettering on it. I sat down with the code enforcement officer, we talked about it. We looked at what, he showed me what a six thousand pound vehicle or less is. And I think even if you look at my previous legislation, it just says anything that has commercial lettering on it would be considered a commercial vehicle. So if your pickup didn't have that, you were fine. You had a van, you were fine. So my whole thing was to, to look at the quality of life for everybody. You know, I feel that if you do run a business, sometime the overhead is going to be, you got to park that somewhere else, because our legislation before I brought that actually said no commercial vehicles at all, none whatsoever. And the reason why I was getting kicked out of court, because we didn't state in our legislation what we considered as a city was a commercial vehicle. So I put a weight limit in there, and that's all I did, and it basically left it the same. But it would not have affected, you know, people who drove vans, people who drove pickup trucks, because that's your personal car. But if it exceeded the weight limit, then it would. So that's where we are now, and I mean, I hear you, I, I, you know, I, I, I think, I think I actually voted against it, abstaining from our piece of legislation, because I, I was, I still affirm, and, and Councilmember's right, I would not bend on what I was proposing. Because I knew what was going to happen, it was very restrictive, so. That's where we are now, and then we got to revisit to see, you know, how we can make it work for everybody, not just for, you know, some people. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Ferguson?
Yes, I would suggest that we would revisit the legislation and put a hold on the enforcement. And, and I mean, and just come up with something else, because there are, I, I received calls as well. And there were a couple that said that they were handicapped and they were not going to be parking their vehicle, I mean, they would have to park their car on the street so that their truck could be in, their spouse's truck could be in the driveway. And so there is a, a need to consider people that have challenges and handicap. So I would suggest that, like I said, the enforcement would be, put a hold on it until we can revisit it. And like Councilman Herring said, the original, what we was going back and forth with many times was the fact that there were so many, I have a picture where just with Ms. Turner was talking about, by, by the apartments. I mean, the whole row is just work, work trucks. And the commercial trucks are just kind of like taking over different areas of the city. So again, we have to try to come to a midpoint where we can accommodate everybody, but that's what I suggest, that we put a hold on the enforcement until we can come up with something that is a little bit more feasible. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. I don't think that's, it's a consensus on...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we put a hold on enforcement of ordinance oh zero four two thousand twenty-five for three months.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Councilman Ashley? Okay. Any opposition? Hearing none, a three-month hold on enforcement will go into effect immediately, and then we can revisit, give us time to revisit that legislation to make the necessary adjustments. So if you have received a ticket already, which hopefully nobody has, you can see Mr. Green.
Mr. President, may I also?
Yes.
If we come to a reasonable solution prior to the three months, I'm asking that we definitely send out a letter at least thirty days in advance. And if, at the, at the end of the three months, if we come to it, then at least they get another thirty-day notice on what the new law will state.
Yep. I, I guess I got the two Ms. mixed up, the RPP versus this legislation, because the RPP does have a sixty-day notice before it goes into effect. But now I understand that this one did not have a sixty-day notice. It was just immediate. Okay. All right, so we will do that. Is there any other comments?
I just want to say one additional fact. When I made the suggestions for RPP, I didn't have anything with the vans or anything else. I understand about the commercial vehicles. But several representatives got up here and said that what I had made some suggestions about like five feet from the intersection, about feet from the driveway, stuff like that, those are key points of the way to park. And so that's, that's in my suggestion. So, you know, like I said, Mr. Green know my number, I'm here, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. So, so one thing, so, and I, I let you go, so didn't want to interrupt you, but nobody can hear you online. So that's why, when, when you guys raise your hands in here to say something, I, I push back, one, because you already had your five minutes, two, because the audience online cannot hear a thing that you say. So they're just sitting there like, what's, what's going on? So that's why I said I'll stay here after to, to hear your additional comments and then we go from there. With that, if there are no other comments from the city council, the time is eight forty-four. This meeting is now adjourned. We welcome you to our next meeting, which will be on Monday at seven thirty. All right, you can talk about anything you want to talk about for your five minutes, you just don't, you don't have to stick to the legislation. Monday at seven thirty. Seven thirty.